Meeting of the Willits City Council order for July 22nd. Could you all rise and join us in the pledge? Pledge allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Kathy, can we have a roll call please?
Yes.
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Madoff?
Here.
Here.
First item is public communications. This is limited to items that are not on the agenda. No action will be taken. Time is limited to three minutes. But do we have anybody that'd like to make any public communications this evening? Things not on the agenda? Second, third, and last call? Apparently not. So we will move on to public matters, which is we get to swear in our new city clerk, which will be run by our city manager.
Unless you would like to do it.
No, I defer. You could probably do a much better job.
Well, I just want to make a couple of comments first. As your former city clerk, I stepped into the role of city manager in 2013 a little unexpectedly. Kathy had already been appointed the July before as the deputy city clerk, and so she's been serving for three years in that capacity. And I have to say, once I became city manager and with all of the transition that was taking place, there's not really been a dull moment or a free moment. And so Kathy, along with other staff, Rod and Suzie in particular, John Schirman, have had to really work independently. And she has just done a fantastic job functioning as city clerk, although she hasn't been formally recognized for that or officially appointed to that role. And so that's what tonight is about. Through the budget process, we approved a reclassification of her position to city clerk, and we need to formalize that with the administration of the oath. So with that said... Ooh! Okay. Dismissed. All right. Would you please raise your right hand. Do you, Kathy Sanders, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign, and domestic; that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California; that you take this obligation freely without any limitation or purpose of evasion; and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you're about to enter. I do.
Congratulations. Well, thank you for doing it. Kathy has been a solid member of the team here. It's good to get that formalized.
Yes, indeed.
So the next item under public matters on the agenda this evening is discussion and possible approval of the proposed redevelopment projects of the former Remco hydraulic site. And once again, I am going to step down as a participant in this discussion as at a conflict of interest relative to one of the proposals being made on this site. Turn it over to my esteemed Vice Mayor, Ron Ornstein, to pull this part of the meeting, and I will rejoin you when Becken.
Yeah. Take a nap or go see a movie or give a meal. Okay, thank you. Okay. The...I think we have a couple of pieces of business. One piece before we proceed onward is there was some question in the past about the city's role in this whole matter. And I'm going to pay ask our city attorney to clarify that.
All right. As I mentioned in the agenda summary, this is not a typical land use decision. It's an unusual circumstance that arises from the city's role as the lead public agency in the Remco contamination cleanup matter and the city's role in working with the Willits remediation trust as assigned to the role of cleaning up the site. And an agreement was reached between the trust and the city back in 2008 that the buildings would come down, the foundations would be removed, and the trust would bear that expense that was estimated to cost $1.5 billion unless there was a proposed reuse of those buildings and incorporated those buildings, in which case the trust could sell the property to a developer who would make use of those buildings, and the trust would be relieved of its obligation to spend that money and take the buildings down. And that basic agreement then was incorporated into the feasibility study. It was finalized in 2011 and became a legal requirement then. But there wasn't a lot of explanation about standards or criteria, really no discussion about it. It simply provides that unless there is a plan approved use, the buildings must come down at that trust expense. And so the trust has informed the city that there are two potential developments of the property, that they have signed contracts to enter into, and that they're in escrow with both parties. And the first is the stump training proposal. A contract was signed, and then the very next day, a contract was signed with the Mitchell group. And both groups are in escrow, but they cannot proceed unless and until the city approves of a project. And the trust had been working with Mr. Penoli's group for, I think, a good two years or more. And Mr. Mitchell's proposal is much newer. And because, it was explained to me by the trust's attorney, that because the trust had been working with Mr. Penoli for a longer period of time, they would designate his proposal to be in first position. But they've also made it clear to me that they have no preference of one project over the other. And they are asking that the city approve either or both. And so the city, in accordance with the language of the FS, is simply to approve, that it may approve one of these projects, and if it so approves, the trust will be relieved of this $1.5 million expense. And that's the issue before you. The trust is trying to save some money and not bear the expense of taking those buildings down, and they're presenting these proposals. And in my view, the city council has the discretion, as requested, to approve either project or approve one and not the other. And I believe the city council has the discretion to approve the Penoli project. It also has discretion to approve the Mitchell project. And it has discretion to approve both of the projects or none of the projects. And there is a 15-month window of time that we're in now. The agreement in the FS provides that the buildings must come down no later than 15 months after the approval of the RAP, the remedial action plan. And that remedial action plan is now with Judge Susan Ilston of the federal court. And upon her approval of that RAP, there, or perhaps she has already approved it, I'm not quite sure, not yet.
Not yet.
Any day now, she may be approving that RAP. And that starts the window of time for the trust then to take down the buildings at their expense within 15 months unless there's been an approved project. So it's my opinion that this feasibility study, which only provides that you may approve a project, gives you the discretion to approve either or both. And that's exactly what the trust has asked you to do, approve either or both of these There is some, in a typical land use decision where an applicant is a real property owner and makes an application to the city council for approval of a project, there is some basis for approving or disapproving on the basis of your general plan. This is not a typical land use decision, but I think the rationale is the same in that in a typical land use decision, you're asked to make your decision on the basis of a legitimate public purpose. And upon a finding that a particular project will further the plans and the policies of your general plan. And I think it would be appropriate to consider your general plan and particularly the economic development element that was attached to this agenda summary to provide some guidance as to whether or not either or both projects are compatible with or in furtherance of your general plan. Basically, my opinion or advice to you is you have wide discretion as long as these projects serve a legitimate public purpose to approve either or both.
Does anybody have any...
I have checked with probably a half a dozen realtors in town, and my question is, no one that I have talked to has ever heard of two people being in escrow at the same time for the same piece of property.
Well, these are, this is a first for them because there are in fact two escrows that are opened up. And the escrows are, the sale agreements are contingent on city council approval of a particular project. So if the council determined that the Mitchell proposal was the preferred proposal and approved it, only in that circumstance would the trust continue on with the escrow and sell the property. And only upon close of that escrow could that project proceed. And the same is true with Mr. Penoli. So these are conditional agreements that are subject to city council approval. The escrows won't close unless there is such approval. And if you approve both, if you elect to approve both projects, because the trust has determined that Mr. Penoli is in first position since they've worked with him longer, they have said that they would proceed and sell to him. And that's under contracts now that will expire on July 28. And so both parties have conditional contracts with the trust that are subject to city council approval that will expire and become void if there is no city council approval by July 28. And the trust lawyer has told me that if that should happen, and by the way, that's the staff recommendation this evening, is that we not take action tonight and that we instead impose some conditions that allow some time for those conditions to be met. If the council were to adopt the staff's recommendation and not allow for the approval of these contracts by the July 28 deadline, the contracts will expire, and the trust, I believe, will be entering into new contracts with these two developers.
Sue, if you could talk, Jim, just a little bit more about staff's recommendation because it is different from our previous staff recommendation, which is that we, basically we have to give our blessing to leave the buildings up, and if we have a preference for a project, to voice that. But you specifically are suggesting some other assurances, yeah, from the trust and from Pepsi. So can you describe that a little bit?
I will briefly, but I'm going to ask that Stuart Block address this, but just, we'll get into that after we cover this more. So just briefly, I would say that since the last meeting, I've had many conversations with Mr. Block, who is our environmental legal counsel from Oakland, as well as with Phil Hunzucker, the trust's attorney. And we communicated to the trust that our reservation as your legal advisors, that there was not enough known about these projects to give an unconditional approval. We saw drawings on an easel, heard descriptions of the projects, but we really don't have concrete information about what the developer's ability to pull it off is. And we haven't seen any financial statements. We haven't seen any project development plans or budgets. At the presentation on July 10, Mr. Mitchell said that he would be willing to provide a performance bond. And we thought about that and thought that if it's possible to get some type of guarantee or other assurance that the approved development will in fact go forward to its completion and not be a project that sits on a shelf for five years, that's what we need to do. We need to have some kind of assurance that the developer isn't back going to go forward to get it done. And the other big issue that Mr. Block is going to speak to is Pepsi's obligation to fund the trust activities. And there's some uncertainty about whether or not Pepsi has a continuing obligation to fund the remediation efforts, particularly after a sale to a new owner. And we want to make sure that we have a strong commitment, that Pepsi, an enforceable commitment, that Pepsi will in fact fund those remediation efforts. The trust is willing to do the work, but only to the extent that their work is funded. And frankly, we'd rather look to Pepsi to fund those than to either of the developers. And so we came up with some conditions. And talking about these concerns with the trust, Mr. Block and I expressed that the best we could recommend at this point would be a conditional acceptance. And it was made clear to us that the trust was not willing to enter into a conditional sale and that they would not sell the property with some conditions first. And so instead, we worked with the trust to develop some conditions that were acceptable to the trust and to Mr. Block and I.
Sue, I do, and this can be a question for either you or for Mr. Block, but I do, the city of Willits is not in a position to, I think we're limited on what we can do as far as a real estate transaction. I think it absolutely is in our purview to want to be assured that the project is going to happen, and I certainly would support benchmarks. And I don't know if that would be in this process or in the building, you know, in the building permit process or the use permit for the site if there would be one. I hesitate to, I mean, I suppose the more information we can get, the better. But when we're talking about like detailed financial plans and things like that, I would think that as the seller, that the trust would take on some of the burden of that analysis. You know, we're not the realtors in this situation, or we're not the sellers.
Well, we worked with the trust attorney in developing the conditions that are in your agenda summary.
Okay, so they're on board with it?
Mr. Hunzucker participated in drafting these conditions and made it clear that the trust will not sell the property. If we simply approved a development this evening, that we impose some conditions on it, they're not going to sell the property until those conditions are met. But they will agree, they are on board with the process of putting this matter over for 30 days so that they can get the approval from Pepsi, that Pepsi is on board to fund the remediation efforts and so that the developers can produce some of the information that's requested. The trust is completely on board with that, knowing that the contracts that they have will expire on July 28 and that they're willing to enter into new contracts or extend the existing contracts to allow that to happen.
All right. I think before we get into a lot of details about the conditions and everything, I feel it's very important to nail down this understanding about the city's role. I think Jim gave a good explanation about it. This is not a usual real estate deal, and that's a fact. And I assume, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the agreement between the city and the trust and the letters from the trust and the indication of how the trust views the city's role overrides the, you know, the normal real estate deal. Is that a good statement? Correct?
Yeah, the trust is trying to get out from under spending $1.5 million to take the building down. And so to avoid that big expense, they are looking to the city to give its approval. And only if the city gives that approval will they sell the property and thereby, and they want the city to confirm that they have, that the trust has satisfied its obligations and the buildings don't have to come down.
So as the property owner, the trust has the right to ask the city to take on this responsibility?
They do, and that was a negotiated agreement that now is in the FS. The feasibility study says that the buildings must come down no later than 15 months after the approval of the RAP unless there is a city-approved use of the existing buildings. And so that's what's before you. This is all about the trust wanting to save $1.5 million and having the city agree that a proposed development is appropriate so they can get out from that obligation. And Mr. Block and I have thought that, well, that all sounds fine, but we really ought to be imposing some conditions to benefit the city. We want to make sure that if there's a project approved, that it's going to be built. And we want to make sure that Pepsi is on the hook to pay for the remediation expense until you get to the point of a no further action letter, until it's cleaned up to the satisfaction of the court and the water board. That's what we'd like. We'd like to not relieve Pepsi of that obligation until we have that assurance. And we're told that, you know, Pepsi's a huge corporation, and they can't just instantly get all the people in the room that need to meet in the room, and it's going to take a month for them to give us that assurance.
So just to sum it up without beating this thing too much to death, I just want to establish that the city is not doing a power grab and it is not overstepping its authority. Would that be in this?
No, that's absolutely true. This isn't a case of the city unreasonably interfering with an agreement to develop property. This is the city responding to a request by the trust to be relieved of its obligation to take the buildings down in conformance with the terms of section 5.4.2 of the feasibility study. And the city has the right, the negotiated right, to approve either project or both or either project. And should we do so, then the trust can save some money and not have to tear the buildings down. But we, so anyway, the bottom line is, in my view, you have wide discretion to approve either project or both or neither project.
Any other questions on this?
My other questions are for Stuart.
Okay, so we're, I guess I can ask the public because everybody's getting involved with this thing. Does anybody in the public have any questions about the city's role?
Public opinion.
Any unknowns? Okay, good. That was a clear explanation. Thank you. Now, I'm going to ask Stuart Block to step up, and he's going to talk about the conditions, et cetera.
I think Mr. Lance hit the conditions as well as some of the reasons why we thought it was a good idea in terms of the city moving forward to make sure any project on the property met these conditions. Because this really is the trust, the owner of the property, asking to be relieved of certain obligations. And those obligations weren't imposed arbitrarily by the city. The obligations that came as part of the cleanup plan were imposed because the city was concerned that the trust complete the remediation as it's required to do, and so whatever happens with the future of the site, that it's a clean site. And that if it's going to leave behind the foundations and the structures that for some folks were a plus, but for some folks were an impetitive to development and options for the property use, that it, the trust assured the city that there was a future use for the property that would go forward and incorporate and actively incorporate those buildings and structures. That was the basis on which the condition was put into the feasibility study and has been adopted into the remedy for the cleanup. So with respect to the trust's current request, and two proposals have been presented, and we have some general information about both of them, but what the staff believed is that we didn't have sufficient information to determine and to assure that the original goals of the negotiation, of the original trust obligations, we didn't have enough information to assure that those would be fulfilled going forward with the developments from the information that was available. That's one piece. The second piece is a little bit more complicated and legalese, but the sum of it is, is that the trust only acts to perform the cleanup based on funding from Pepsi. Pepsi gets a budget every year from the trust, and it gets funded on an annual basis, and it performs the activities that it's funded and approved to perform. Under the initial consent decree that resolved the lawsuit that got the trust formed and got the property underway for remediation, the working assumption at that time in 2000 was that a lot of the funds to perform the work were going to come from insurance companies. And there was a separate lawsuit against insurance companies, which has been delayed and put off for a significant period of time for reasons that are not material. But it also appears that the funds, if any, that are going to be incurred from the insurance company are insufficient to fund and will not even reimburse the trust what it's, will not reimburse Pepsi even what it's put in so far. The way the trust gets funded now and has been funded since the early 2000s is on a quote loan basis, that every year, the money that Pepsi gives to the trust to perform all the work is considered a loan against future recovery from the insurance lawsuit and from the insurance proceeds. So it is keeping track of every nickel that is spent out there. And we addressed this issue on the hospital way back when. But the bottom line is that the trust was only obligated, sorry, I misspoke, Pepsi was only obligated to loan those funds to the trust for a certain period of time. And the period of time ends when the court approves the cleanup plan. So that remedial action plan, that RAP that's sitting on the judge's desk now, once she approves that, Pepsi's position, and I should say, all of this termination that I'm talking about is Pepsi's position, I think the city would take a different one. But Pepsi's position is that once that RAP is approved, Pepsi no longer has the obligation to fund the trust activities. Meaning that we have a lot of cleanup that's been done, and that's the good news, is that during the whole time the planning has been going on, the cleanup has been going on. And what they've been doing out there for all these years, what the trust has been doing, is exactly the plan that is the quote cleanup plan. So on an interim basis, they have been actually performing the cleanup, but it's not yet complete. So Pepsi has an argument that as of today, tomorrow, next week, they no longer have an obligation to fund the trust activities. So one of the things that we have asked for is a condition from the trust and from Pepsi to relieve them of this, or we propose that the city asks as a condition, is that in exchange for relieving Pepsi ultimately of the cost of $1.5 million, and that was in $2,008, to remove the structures and foundations, that they provide written assurance and some form of third-party financial assurance that they will complete the remedial action plan to the satisfaction of the court and to the water board. And in some ways, the development issues aside and the development options aside, this staff believes is a critical piece of moving forward with any development on the property and any transfer that the trust proposes to make that requires city approval. So, and the trust could transfer the property without city approval, in which case we wouldn't have the ability to add this or request this condition. But in this case, since they're asking for the city's approval, the city has the discretion to make it conditional in that way. So I think that's the big issue and some of the tortured background on that big issue that is the basis for the condition proposed in the report, staff report from Pepsi. We have spoken, as Mr. Lance mentioned, with the trust attorney, and he believes that Pepsi is willing to provide those financial assurances, including third funds that are set aside, and we will be able to verify or will be available to complete the work that's required. But that is taking Pepsi some time to do. They need to create a structure for it, and they need to... They need to create a structure for it and they need to budget for it and they need to get the right folks in the room to sign off on it. And my understanding is that process is underway.
So you had mentioned earlier that the court is prepared to approve the RAP. And once they do that, where does that put the cleanup?
So the cleanup is ongoing and the trust, I believe, is funded for the work that is proposed this year. But Pepsi's position, as it's been expressed through their counsel, is that after the RAP is approved, under the terms of the consent decree, Pepsi no longer has any obligation to fund any of the activities of the trust. And the trust has no other funding source to perform the work for the remediation of the property.
So how would the city's action affect that?
So the city's action or the condition that's been proposed in the staff report is that we would make a condition of the city's approval of either of these two uses, conditioned on, among other things, the trust promising to perform all the activities that are required under the consent decree and are proposed in the RAP, to the extent they're funded. So that's part one. And then part two would be that Pepsi give written assurances that they will fund the remediation work through issuance of a no further action letter by the court and by the water board, and that they will also provide and demonstrate the availability of those funds for this purpose.
So, well, I guess I'm trying to get my head wrapped around, why would they, why would they do that? Why would Pepsi do that if, if the city takes any action or doesn't take action? If the RAP is approved by the court, wouldn't Pepsi just say, well, it's approved and that's the end of our, our game?
Right, the million and a half dollars, I think, is the...
Well, the million and a half is, well, that's the trust, the trust is on the hook for that. Well, actually, it would be Pepsi.
Correct.
Okay, so the million and a half goes through the trust to Pepsi, so it's Pepsi that's looking to save the million and a half?
Correct.
That's the hook?
That is the hook. And I think they could also argue, and as I have argued to them, because if, on behalf of the city, we've taken the position that it's not a hundred percent clear that they're allowed to terminate their funding obligations, but I think the trust also believes that because of the history of their activity out there and Pepsi being the successor to the party ultimately responsible for causing the contamination, that they might have some legal liability to somebody, notwithstanding the fact that the consent decree purports to limit that.
Does the city have, I'll get to you in a second, does the city have any kind of a, I don't want to say obligation, authority, we'll say, to make sure with, with this, I guess the only thing the city has is this, this one and a half million dollar sword we're hanging over their heads. And as long as the city has that, we can ask all kinds of things. Is that...
You can ask all kinds of things, I think. At some point, though, the, the cost of whatever the city might ask might outweigh what Pepsi believes the value of the...
Yeah, but what we're talking about is within reason. It's just a way to keep us in at the table.
Right. I, I think that's correct.
All right.
Well, just to clarify, you know, hypothetically, if we said neither of the proposed uses were acceptable, then even if the court has approved the RAP, Pepsi is on the hook for taking down the buildings and taking out the concrete and all that.
That's correct.
Okay. I don't think we're going to do that.
In the letter that I read, and I don't know if it's in this one, but the first one that I read is that the trust said that the building and the grounds and everything are good for commercial use and that type of thing right now, that, that they would say that it was okay to use it as, I mean, you could build a housing project on it or whatever. But for right now, the buildings and the foundations and everything are good enough to use it as, for our commercial use.
That's true.
So I have questions, and Anfar is not here, correct?
Right.
Okay, so, because my initial instinct is to have us do what government doesn't usually do, which is move at a quick pace. This has been sitting there for, you know, about a decade, and I'm really excited to see activity going on at the site, especially with everything going on with the bypass and, you know, we have this real opportunity right now. So initially, when I read the staff's recommendation, I was thinking that Pepsi was already committed, basically, that Pepsi is, was previously committed to paying for the cleanup through the cleanup. But you're saying that because we're going to take this action, it might be an opportunity for them to be like, oh, we don't have that 1.5 obligation anymore. Because I, I just, my sense is that we do support the building staying up since both developers are into that. I mean, they're historical and there is a lot of good usable building there. But, and by us taking that action, if we were, because, because my other question, this is sort of a trust question, so I don't know if you guys can answer it, but if the contracts expire on the 28th, which is going to happen, do we know if, what their plan is as far as, are they saying that if we take staff's recommendation, that they will continue those two contracts, or are they renegotiating the contracts? Or they, I mean, I, there's a lot of, that would bring up a lot of things up in the air if the developers have a price, you know, presumably already in escrow. What would happen in that interim if that, if it expires?
Mr. Lance and I asked that question to the trust council, and he was just the council, but, he was not sure what would proceed next. He did, was clear that the trust wants to sell the property and was going to remain interested in working with the parties to sell the property, but as to how that would happen exactly, or on what pace or in what order, he was not clear.
So if we took action tonight on neither or both, or, you know, one or both of the projects, would, would that lock in any sort of, like, the contracts would expire, but would our conditions be on the projects that exist, I guess I should say? So we're saying, you know, we have these conditions and we're supporting one or both of the projects. Would that protect the developers somewhat as far as other competing offers coming in?
So my understanding is that the requirement that the trust has placed on this is that the city's approval is unconditional. The trust is looking to know that if it transfers the property to either of the parties, that it is relieved of its obligation to take down the buildings and to incur the expense of, of doing that.
Then it would be no action tonight.
Sorry?
Then it would be no action tonight if we wanted these assurances.
Correct. Right. The only thing that would keep things moving with the trust, but would cost you these conditions, which would preclude the council from imposing these conditions or getting this security, is if you approved one or both of the projects. So that would, the trust would move forward with the sale, but we, but the city would not have these protections that's in, that are in the staff memo.
So it, it might be appropriate to talk about the conditions somewhat. You already talked about the conditions that we're looking to place on the trust as well as Pepsi, but the proposed, the conditions for the developer. Did you want to expand on that?
Sure. There are really two conditions that the staff proposes on the developer. And they come out of the, the goal that was expressed initially when the FS was negotiated and that I think the city still has, my understanding, is to assure that a project gets built and it gets built in a reasonable timeframe. And so that requires something more than a proposal and, and initial sketches. So what the, what the memo proposes and what staff proposes is that beyond what has been presented today, that in order for the trust to be relieved of those obligations, it present one or two development plans so that the city knows more precisely what is going to be built and that it will in fact use the buildings, that there be a project financing plan that's revealed and provided to the city for evaluation, so there's an understanding about where the funds will come from. And that would be a part of the financing plan, is a budget and then a sources and uses type analysis, what are, what are the source of funds, equity versus debt, and, and where will those funds go? Some sense of what it will cost to build, what's been proposed, and assurance that the, the funds will be there. And, sorry, that's the second part, is that there be some sort of, form of completion assurance. And I know the city does this in other contexts for public works projects, for example, but that there be some sort of performance guarantee or bond or other reasonable financial guarantee acceptable to the city to assure completion of the project through certificate of occupancy.
So basically, when we're asking for a detailed project financing plan, for example, we're not asking to see their financial statement or their bank accounts? Correct?
It's, it's up to you specifically what you ask for, but, but what I think someone would, would want to see, a professional who would, looking at that, is to say, where are the funds and where are they coming from? And if you're saying you have X amount of dollars in equity, where is that coming from? So some evidence that it exists. Or you have some loan for the balance, who is that with and some verification that those funds would be available for use?
And, and we're probably looking in, in a sense of this information would not be public knowledge, is would be held confidential because it is a financial and a contract thing, I believe the law enables us to do that. Is that correct?
I'd have to talk with Mr. Lance about that. I, I know, I know it's sensitive and I know there are some exceptions for proprietary and business information. So I think we could work with you to answer that question and protect the information for the developers.
But of course, we, we need the time for this information to be developed, which is why staff is recommending we hold off and make a decision.
I do have one other question that I think you probably can't answer.
All right.
I'm just going to ask it anyway. Both of these projects really have a lot of merit and a lot of things to offer our community. Do you know if the trust would consider subdividing the property east-west? Both 101 frontage, I mean, because the fact is, is that both parties want to be the owner and would be willing to consider renting to the other. But I don't think that, you know, I don't know if that's going to happen, but yet the two proposals, both the train and a brewery, are such a perfect match to go together. And I understand why you would want 101. I mean, that's the, that's the money frontage right there. Do you know if the trust would consider that?
I don't know that. Sorry. You were correct that I did not know.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, they should probably open this up for public comment at this point. At this point, I'm not sure if it would be helpful to get into a lot of details about each project at this time, because we have these other questions that we have to decide on. For example, staff's recommendation is that we adopt these conditions that we talked about and consider approving the project at a later date after we, we get Pepsi's assurance that they're going to fund it. So for that reason, and we haven't adopted that yet, but for that reason, I would say we should, you know, avoid discussing the potential, the projects themselves, but, you know, Larry?
My thought is that if you wait, we have no guarantee that Pepsi's going to continue to fund it. Is that correct?
Well, my understanding is that the trust is funded through this year. So they, they get funded on an annual basis.
But whether it is, we say that, that the project that we want or that we want both of them, you don't have to tear down the buildings. The trust is, is going to do it to the end of the year, no matter what happens.
I can't guarantee it, but that's my understanding.
But we don't have any guarantee that Pepsi's going to continue to do it.
That's correct.
That's what we're seeking.
Okay, right.
Yeah, we expect by August sometime, we will have a letter of assurance from Pepsi that they will continue to finance.
But that's an assumption that they will do it or won't do it, but we don't know that today, we don't know that they're going to do it in 30 days.
Exactly, right. Which is why it's recommended that we hold off on it.
Okay.
Just, you know, just to clarify.
I can, I could see that we've had the presentations on both proposals. I know that all the folks who've been here maybe weren't here for both of them, but I would be interested to hear from the two developers if they have any comments on this, because this is a different recommendation than what we were talking about.
On the conditions, I mean.
Yeah.
And I would also be interested in hearing from the public on their sense of the pro and con of these proposals as well, because I think, you know, all of this predicated, is predicated on us approving at least one of them after the conditions are met. So I would like to hear from the public.
Okay, but, so at some point, if we can do that, and that's probably appropriate, but at some point, we will need to make a decision on the staff recommendations and how we proceed. So, okay. Okay. Anybody in the public who has, would like to speak to this matter? Thank you, Stuart. Okay, just for your information, the way this works is there's a little black box and there is a red light that will come on. You have, it'll, it'll timeout in three minutes and we're going to ask that you wrap it up at that point. So watch the lights. Introduce yourself, please.
Good evening. My name is Dave Matrigal.
Oh, I recognize you.
I didn't either.
It's me.
A pleasure introducing yourself.
It's me. I know that the council is posed to not make decisions too quickly that would potentially jeopardize a project down the line. However, that's exactly what you have to do. You have to consider the projects down the line in your decisions tonight. By that, I mean, both projects that have been presented have only dealt with the property. It has not dealt, neither project has dealt with any off-site improvements. When I was with the city, one of the things that we talked about clearly in those days was future land use, what might suit well in our community. And one of the biggest concerns that we had was traffic circulation. It is a problem for us every day. And there are some streets that could be extended, there are other infrastructure situations like Franklin Street where we might remove sidewalks and put them on the property, give the city a little bit wider right away through there. None of these projects have addressed this. They've only talked about the potential funding for their own developments. The city really needs to take a look at its needs for the community, not for the property necessarily. The property, I do believe Pepsi will fund this to the bitter end. Pepsi's a huge company. It has a lot of, it has a lot stayed in goodwill. In the early days of this project, Woodman Corporation was a boat anchor. It really slowed up the process. And in, in doing so, a lot of the money, well over a million and a half dollars, the costs to remove this property, went into the legal pockets. And it's unfortunate, but that's, you know, that's the way it happened. So I do think that since Pepsi's come along, that this project has moved forward much quicker. It's been much more, it's been more of a give and take relationship, much more positive relationship. And I do think they're going to continue that regardless of whether the city chooses to decline these projects or not. I think Pepsi will stay with it to the end. And it's my understanding, it's only a few years off anyway, so they're going to fund it through the rest of the year, but I think that they will fund it the rest of the way. In fact, I believe that they will fund the building removal. It's my own personal opinion. And speaking as a resident of this community, and personally, I think that if those buildings weren't there, that you would have a lot more developers coming to your, to your door and that the current developers would find the property even more beneficial.
Okay, thank you, David. Anybody else? Anybody else? Seriously?
They're here for John's place.
Yeah. All right, so with the, I see the developers are sitting in the room. You are part of the public. Do you have anything you wanna say at this point or? Okay.
Okay.
Wow. Let's bring it back here.
So I gotta say, when I came in here, I was, as I mentioned, I was interested in moving things forward and was hoping that we could make the 28th deadline. I think that's why we at one point talked about having a public forum to make sure that people knew about it and knew what was going on, but we knew that we couldn't do that properly in this timeframe. But this is compelling. This is compelling. I do want to make sure that it will be paid for and I would like to see the detailed project financing plan. I do have a question from the developers and I know that they're not making presentations tonight, but I just wanna clarify for the council that we would be asking that from, we would be asking for these conditions from both of the developers. So we're really not making a decision one way or the other this evening, which-
We're gathering information.
If I was the developer, I would be frustrated by that. I mean, why would I wanna? I think they've both actually put a lot of time already into it, but without my developer hat, with my City of Willits hat, we really need to make sure that it's gonna happen, that it's gonna be followed through upon. So I would be willing to move staff's recommendation to seek for the trust of the redevelopment of the former Remco site, written confirmation from the trust that's subject to the funding from Pepsi, that they will perform all the remediation work, and from Pepsi and forcible written commitment to fund all trust activities, and from the developer of development plan and project financing plan.
Basically, staff's-
Staff's recommendation.
I will second that.
Second, okay. Any more discussion on this? So basically, I think what's behind all of this is these details that we're asking for, somehow we're gonna have to clarify to the parties, the trust, Pepsi and the developers, exactly what it is that we're looking for, correct? I mean-
Right. We'll be communicating to the trust that if this vote should pass, that there are now these imposed conditions and for the trust to communicate those to the developers and to work with the developers and for the trust to advise us when those conditions have been met. And we'll then bring it back on calendar to take up the action of approving or not approving a project once we hear back from the trust.
And bringing it back with the contention, I assume upon when this information can be compiled as well as when we get this letter from Pepsi?
Right. I spoke with Bill Hunzucker about coming back for the second meeting in August and he thought that was, that made sense.
Okay, good.
I do have one other thing. I have received, and I think all of us have received feedback in the community about this topic, but I would love it, there are still folks who don't quite understand what the two proposals are, who weren't able to be at the presentation, and so if our local newspapers might be willing to do a spread on what the proposals are, I think it would be really a benefit, what both of them are, so that we could hear back from folks whether or not they think that's a good idea or if they have. We did receive a letter from Tim King on the dais, but, you know-
Yeah, that's all we've gotten back.
We welcome the other-
I'm sure we all had conversations with individuals.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that I had a tour of the Remco facility with Ed Mitchell earlier this week, and that was very, you know, interesting just to see what those, the shape that those buildings are in and so forth. And so for, you know, I think it's relevant to both proposals. He did mention that it would be a fairly big burden to go into a lot of detailed architectural planning and all of that before even knowing whether they have, you know, offer a stake in the game. And on the other hand, I do think that one of the city's important decisions to make on this is, will either or both of these proposals come to fruition? So I think, without being unduly burdensome on the developers, I think this is a reasonable approach. It's just a little bit uncertain about how much detail are they gonna have to, how many architectural drawings, you know, it is a burden on a developer that it's still, you know, it's very hypothetical at this point for them to invest that much in advance. So I'm mindful of that concern and I think we should be reasonable in our expectations on that, but I do think we have an interest in making sure that there is a reality behind the proposals, so that's-
The financing plan.
Yeah, yeah. So I, you know, somewhere in there, there's a balance, but we need to know that a project, one of both projects would go, would have a reasonable chance of going ahead.
Thanks, Larry.
I think that it's become time that we actually make a move on this as a council. The only actual move that we have to make on this is whether the buildings stay or whether they go. And that's essentially, to say that one business is better than the other businesses is not our particular thing to do. And I really think that both of the projects are excellent projects. And I just think that we can make a decision and go from there and the developers, whoever comes up with it, one or the other, and I both think that both of them are excellent and I would like to see either one of them, but I'm just saying that whenever that happens, it would be really nice to drive into the city and cross a railroad tracks and see something nice happen with that Remco building. And it's been there for years and years and years and it's, I'm real tired of it and I think that it's time to get going on it. Anyhow, that's my spiel.
Okay, I see this as being arguably one of the most important decisions this city council will make, maybe has ever made, because basically what we're looking at is what the future of this town is gonna look like. And even though they're both good projects, they're going to have different effects on the town. And I won't get into, you know, the details at this point, but when you think about it, they both bring different things to the party. And I think it's real important that this city council deliberates and studies and makes an informed decision, because it's not often that we get the opportunity to say, this is what Willits is gonna look like for the next 50 years, the future or your, and I don't think that's overstating it too much. I think that there are gonna be, there are gonna be long-term effects based on who takes over the Remco property. So I think we definitely do have a role in this and we need to rise to that role. Okay?
Motion to second.
We have a motion to second?
I'm sorry, didn't you have a minute or second?
Uh, match it. So it's your party.
Hey. Councilwoman Stransky?
Yeah, this is for the staff recommendation.
Right.
No.
Strong?
Yes.
Madrigal?
Yes.
That's not answering.
Yes. Okay. Well, that was practically painless. Thank you very much. So we will reconvene this question sometime, you know, I guess I assumed, and be ready to make a decision hopefully. I guess we can ask our mayor to come back.
Summoned.
Yeah. Oh, you did? Okay, thank you. It's modern science.
Did you have a moment to have a public forum?
Well, it has to do with the project.
What are you here for?
Oh, okay.
And so since, we'll have him back in August. He can have his uniform on then. Thank you for being here, Tom. And Carl, thank you too. I see you there.
Is John's place next? If not, maybe it should be. Are they gonna bump it?
Sure. It's not up to me. I've done my job, so I'm gonna go back to sleep.
Just kidding. Maybe he took you literally and lent you the nap.
Yeah, why don't we take a five-minute break while we're waiting for everything to reshuffle?
I'll reconvene the meeting of the Willits City Council and, excuse me, thank you. We're gonna, in the interest of trying to accommodate who I think are here, is anybody here that wants to talk about the selecting of next year's auditor? Anybody here interested in the appointment to the Library Advisory Board?
Yes.
Well, we are gonna, we will.
I want that pulled, so I can talk about it.
But I, but I think that I'm inclined to jump over that momentarily, Mr. Stransky, to item seven, which we will recess as the Willie City Council and convene as the Willits Planning Commission and take up item 7A, which is, sitting as a planning commission, a discussion and a possible action to adopt a resolution regarding a use permit, U-14-03 for Daniel W. Chesser. So, hey, Dusty.
Hi.
How you doing? Dusty is our, our planning-
Contract planner, is what I've been called.
Contract planner. We don't, look, he's, runs our planning department, so. I know you put this project together, put quite a bit of time in it. Be interested to hear your report.
Very good. And if I could get a PowerPoint, I have prepared for you there. That would be wonderful.
Carl's is upstairs, so you'll have to meet him. I thought he was gone first.
Is there a way to- Okay.
Is he Sylvester or? Yes, he's got it. There you go. Is there Sylvester flash drive? Yes, he is.
All right. This is my eye test right here, and that says, let's place right there. So that'll probably be the toughest part of the presentation, so I'm glad I got through that. This is use permit U-14-03. Daniel W. Chesser is requesting a use permit to allow for the onsite sale, service and consumption of alcoholic beverages, a full-service bar within an existing vacant 1,800-square-foot building. As you may be aware, John's Place was previously located on Commercial Street and unfortunately burned down, and Mr. Chesser is looking to relocate his bar. We did get two letters from the public on this matter. We did get a letter of support from Ms. Linda Jarvis, and then we received a letter from members of the Willits Teachers Association. It looks like we've got seven signatures on this letter, and they note their concerns about land use compatibility with this project, specifically its proximity to the Willits High School. Just very quickly, I wanna make, just go over the packets that staff prepared for you. You should have a staff report along with several attachments, including attachment A, which is the initial study for the project. You also should have a resolution along with an agenda summary, okay? And you should have the two letters that I just mentioned. So this property is about one and a half acres. It's located just north of our downtown on the east side of US Highway 101, across from Vassar's Pizza, a little bit south of the high school. Here we show the surrounding zonings for the property. This property has the C1 zoning, as does the adjacent property to the north, the south, and the west. On the east, you have MH, which is our industrial zoning. There's an area of the property, and here's the subject building here that'll be used to support the bar. This area will be the parking lot. You have access coming off of right here. This is, this is a separate building that will not be part of the project, nor will this vacant building be either. Basically, half the property, about three-quarters, will be used to support the project. The applicant's proposing to build a fence around the perimeter of the site and to divide it from the property line approximately to this vacant building and then over and back down. They're requesting hours of operation from 9:00 AM to 2:00 AM each day. Here's a picture of the approximately 1,800-foot structure. Here's the driveway coming in. Here's the, this would be the entrance to the bar. This is on the east side of the building, opposite the highway.
There's no entrance on the street side?
There is, I do not believe so. This is a site map that was prepared by the applicant. So again, you can see, north is heading over towards the creek. You've got the access, the proposed parking area, and then again, the proposed building. It does show some of the details about where that fence would be located, again, to keep folks from trespassing over onto this portion of the property that will not be used to support Staff did complete initial study per SEQA and did identify some potentially significant impacts related to traffic, noise, land use compatibility, as well as a potential significant increase in requests for police services, and I'll briefly touch on those. Again, this information is in the initial study and in the staff report. This is a picture heading north on 101. Again, here's our building and here's our ingress, egress access point heading into the property. What staff mentioned in the staff report is that this, as with much of the main road heading through our city, can become rather congested at times. We're not too far south of the intersection with Sherwood Road, so certainly this lane can back up quite quickly. I did go and visit the site on Monday around 3:30 and did notice some of those, of that traffic congestion, and so again, you have several cars lining up at the light, waiting to take a left onto Sherwood Road. You also have quite a bit of traffic heading southbound. So again, at this point, if you were trying to like take a left-hand turn, you may have to wait a while before you can safely do so. So I think what staff sort of concluded was, this isn't a situation that's ununique to many of the other businesses and driveways in the city of Willits. And although you may have to wait a minute, certainly, you know, I think our folks have gotten fairly used to dealing with these type of traffic situations. Another issue certainly is noise. Mouth is a little sensitive. There we got it, though. Hopefully, this map is helpful to the commission. This is showing the proposed location of John's Place, and then I can't, there's the previous location. We've got, in blue, we have our closest sensitive receptors being residences within 400 feet of the property boundaries. Those are again outlined in blue. Yellow is showing the high school property as well as the continuation school across the street to the west. the street to the west. This property is zoned industrial and doesn't house the high school, but staff understands that it is used by the students for, for their ag classes. The, staff wrote in the report that there was a potential to cause significant noise impacts typically during your late night hours, and that can be from, from special events like live music that could go on late into the night, as well as from just, you know, folks congregating outside the bar to smoke cigarettes and, and have a couple laughs. That type of noise at late night certainly can, can travel. Briefly, and then, again, land use compatibility, this is something that the, the Teachers Association members touched on in their letter. Staff understands that, that it's kind of a, maybe a, more of a, a personal feeling, doesn't really fall into SEQA or, or the planning world necessarily, but I did show that, you know, you do have the city park, you do have a church, you do have the schools in close proximity to this. I will mention that, you know, although, you know, they're going for their use permit approval through, through us, the local jurisdiction, they still have to get their license from ABC, and because of the, the property's proximity to the school, ABC does have the ability to deny that transfer of the liquor license. So as we've explained to the applicant, getting your use permit from the city and fulfilling the conditions doesn't necessarily give you the right to, to establish the bar at this location. Rather, there's, there'll be a process with ABC to go about getting their, their liquor license transferred.
Dusty, do you know, what was the timeline for that process with ABC?
I'm not sure. They did, they did mention, I spoke to one of their staff members early on in, in getting this project submitted, and they did say that they were not going to weigh in on the liquor license until the local jurisdiction had, had weighed in on the, the use permit matter. So unfortunately, we don't have a feel for, for how they're gonna go with it, but I believe there is a, a process for that that involves public input, and certainly they'll be forwarded, the conversation decision from today. The, the last thing that I wanted to, to mention under significant impacts was the potential for this to cause additional calls for police services. Staff's recommending a number of conditions to, to try to, to help alleviate that potential. We're asking that, that lighting be installed around the parking lot to illuminate it, not so bright that it's, it's shining to off-site residents and causing a nuisance, but, but illuminated enough to where someone can, can walk to their car from the bar and, and be able to see around and under and, and have that, that safety precaution there. Another one is, again, we're asking for fencing to be placed around to, to eliminate trespassing, and we've asked that, 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 that fence design be, be reviewed and approved by, by our police department. And that could be, you know, whether it's a, a see-through or a solid fence, they could get into height, certainly planning staff's gonna be interested to make sure that the fencing doesn't interfere with sight distance when pulling out of the driveway and those types of things. Another condition that staff's recommending is that the applicant installs security cameras both inside and outside of the bar. It's the hopes that, that should something happen, that there would be video evidence that the, that our police department could review, and, and hopefully, you know, if there are cameras, that would maybe discourage somebody that, that's thinking of, of acting out from, from potentially, you know, having a better thought. So, so those conditions have been offered to, to help mitigate potential impacts to police services. And with that, that concludes staff's report, although certainly happy to answer any questions that folks might have.
Well, thank you, Dusty. First off, do we have any questions up here, Dusty?
Yeah, I, this is probably gonna be categorized as a silly question because everybody knows the answer, but it's the kind of thing that everybody knows, but I'm not sure what the basis of it is, or officially, but there is, there is this condition that exists about having, you know, bars and other types of businesses certain distances away from schools and churches, et cetera. In a city this size, where it's so small and everybody goes everywhere, what difference has that really made?
That, that's not a silly question. In fact, that's a question that staff struggled with, because it, it, you know, automatically you're like, oh, gosh, this is next to the high school, that's not an ideal location. But then, thinking about it, it was like, well, what, what exactly, you know, what, what's the planning reason why you wouldn't? And, and I, and the only thing that, that staff could, could kind of come up with was, you don't wanna subject the students to a certain element of behavior or something. And, you know, I don't know that that's the case with something like John's Place, but, but it probably comes down to a situation of who's running the operation, and, you know, what, how are they going about making sure that they're allowing the, you know, folks that are, you know, willing to, to behave in a normal fashion versus maybe folks that, that have some personal problems and, and act out, and you'd like to think that, you know, people in those situations would, you know, not be allowed to, to come and be a patron of that location.
So I guess the fact that a kid's gonna walk around the, the city, he's gonna be exposed to these things anyway, whether or not he's going to and from school, but I guess the point there is that there's more concentrated concentration of kids who are passing by if it's closer than if it's not. Would that be the rationale?
I, I would assume that that would be the case, and, and should this project be approved. And, and to the applicant's benefit, I should mention that, you know, after they established their bar at the old location on Commercial, I mean, a preschool did move in next door.
Charter school, too.
And a, yeah, and a charter school, too, and, I mean, certainly, we, we have our, our chief of police here, and maybe he would chime in if we've had issues, you know, with the previous location and proximity to schools, but.
I do have one other question. At one point, it had been brought up that this might be a temporary thing, but this, the use permit is not a temporary use permit, is that correct?
It can become one. The applicant did mention that to staff. Staff asked if they wanted to put that in their request, and it was not part of their request, but, but any, we can put a term limit on, on the use permit, if, if that's the direction that Johnson wants to go.
Just my experience has been that temporary things in Willets usually last forever, so...
And the permanent things last two years.
And so that's certainly, so I, so I was expecting it to be a temporary request, and so the fact that it isn't is kind of refreshing, in a way. And I don't, I don't think, and I'll be interested to hear from the public, but I don't think this would cause any additional calls for police service over, you know, what has historically been a bar. I mean, I think it would be an equivalent amount, and there has been a time period where that hasn't been there, but I wouldn't imagine that it would be a, you know, a large uptick in, in police services, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, I, I read, staff follows your logic in that this is the same operator in the bar that, that operated less than a mile away, and now it's, it's the same operator coming in, so we could expect this, this same type of, of, of level of, of concern. But, you know, again, you know, it's staff's job to sort of think of the worst situations and, you know, recognize that the, the permit's tied to the land and not, not the applicant. So should it, you know, be, something comes up and it has to be sold in the future, you know, we would be dealing with, with potentially a new operator and could, you know.
And it is, I'm sorry, I just had one other thing before we go on. There, I think it's a positive that there's no doors going out onto the street, you know, where kids are walking by, whereas when it was a charter school, you know, that did happen, although John's was there first. I think that, but there's no, there's nothing in the plans about adding any entrance on, onto the street, correct?
Correct.
But it probably doesn't specifically.
The, two things that I think are different, and Holly just mentioned that the door was not out to the street where it was in the old, in the old site. Another one was that you can buy anything that you want liquor-wise across the street from the high school, essentially. And in my thirty-five years that I taught at high school, I never had anybody go to John's and get a drink and bring it to the high school, but they did bring bottles of beer and stuff to the high school that they had bought at other places that they had. So in my estimation, I think that John's being there without the door out to the, to the highway and whatever is, is, you know, a reasonable thing, and I would certainly go for the staff recommendation to conduct a public hearing and approve the permit for U fourteen oh three, subject to conditions and approval of recommendations by the staff.
Well, we may entertain that motion once we've had the public hearing.
What was that?
I said, I would entertain the motion once we've had the public hearing.
Thank you, I'll come back to that.
Thank you. Just taking any, any comments from the dais here before we open the public hearing. Yes, you good?
No, I'm good.
Dusty, if this were to be approved tonight, it, does it set any sort of precedent for any potential future applications that are within the proximity to the, to a school as this one is? Or is it just basically on a case-by-case basis?
Well, I, I think every project provides its own unique circumstances, sure, but, you know, I guess by approving a bar in close proximity to, you know, other civic uses, you know, should we get another application for a bar, and it was, you know, a similar situation in proximity, you know, I'm sure if the council was going down the road of wanting to deny it based on, you know, land use compatibility or something, you know, they would probably point to the fact that you did approve John's Place, but I don't think you're, you know, I'm not, I don't think you're setting any, any hard precedences where, you know, yeah. Did I answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Probably be a different five people up here on the next one. Might have different moral values for two.
Right, there you go.
You probably aren't super familiar with the ABC process or maybe, maybe areas, but I, I do believe that the ABC has some criteria as far as how many bars are in the area or how, how many liquor establishments, and it would be the ABC that would, you know, potentially have the measuring tape to the, to the school, I think. And there's also the, the Veterans Building in, in between the high school and the...
You're saying that they serve alcohol if they have veterans?
Actually, they do. They have a liquor license, yes.
They don't have a liquor license.
Yes, they do.
You know, I would, you know, anecdotally, I would say that when I was growing up here, we used to count the bars in town and gas stations and...
Churches.
And churches. I've told this story before, huh? There was, there was twenty-seven bars in Willets, there was twenty-six gas stations and twenty-eight, I'm making those up within a factor of two or three, huh? Twenty-eight churches. Now, now we're down to three bars, or two bars with possible three, half a dozen gas stations. We still have about thirty churches, the only thing that's really held steady. I don't know if that's relevant, anything per se, but I also will say that we never had, we never had a bar next to the high school. There's never been a bar this close to the high school until they put Vassar's in, and across the street, that was a shell gas station that had no, it sold nothing but gas and tire, you know, fixed tires. So, there was a change, something happened, you know, I guess when Vassar's, which was just a beer and wine place, but there was either, whether it was a, you know, either there was a change in, in either a local ordinance or in a state law or something, but, but clearly in the, historically, early on, it was, it was a well-enforced and a well-defined thing that bars were not next to schools. So, we seem to be, one by one, knocking over these institutions, and it's anybody's interpretation whether our society is profiting from that on a moral way or it's paying the price, but up to your own discretion.
The one thing you forgot, Bruce, is that, that Robbie's Shell Station was the place that people worked out their frustrations, and that you could go by there any time after school, and somebody was duking it out right behind them.
Well, we actually went a little further down Bittenbender Lane, and it was back, about two-hundred feet back from there, but, yeah, been there, too.
And you can also get alcohol at the gas station by Castile and Lane, is, or, yeah.
I don't know.
I think they sell. At that gas station?
I may, they don't sell this, they sell hard alcohol at, at the one across the street. So, enough of that. I'm gonna open up the public hearing, be interested to hear comments from the community. Please come up, introduce yourself, and try and keep your comments to three, three minutes or so.
I'm Jim King, I reside at 290 Bittenbender, which is just up the hill from the proposed project. Most of you haven't lived on Bittenbender Hill or had to navigate Bittenbender Lane and the traffic situation on a daily basis like I have for the past twenty-eight years. It, it's a, that, it's a, I have only two concerns. I don't have any concerns about Mr. Chesser's ability to run an orderly establishment. I'm really not that concerned about the alcohol near the high school. There are two things I'm concerned about, traffic, circulation, that's one item, and noise. If you live on top of Bittenbender Hill, all the noise rises. Every time they have a, a, a street dance during Frontier Days, I hear every word, and it keeps me awake at night, and I'm concerned, I think there needs to be limits on how loud this is gonna be and what, what the hours are gonna be, whether it, that it's not outdoors. I think you need to put some conditions on it if you approve this project, but my really big concern is the circulation. There's a, there's a middle lane on Highway 101, and the exit from the proposed bar, or the, the, the entrance exit, is right across the street from Vassar's Pizza. The traffic backs up quite a ways down on that middle lane that's, you know, lined up to go up Sherwood Road, and then there are a few of us that have to make left turns across southbound traffic to get to the food and liquor parking lot and up Bittenbender Lane, and that is a nightmare, and I, I wanna shoot myself for not opposing the project, you know, twenty years ago when they expanded the, the mini-mart at the, at the bottom of Bittenbender Lane, because that really added to the problem. I think you're gonna have a real situation during heavy traffic times when people in the bar are trying to make left turns onto, onto North Main Street. They're, they're gonna have a hard time getting in, and they're gonna get frustrated. You're gonna have situations where the traffic is stacked up, trying to get up Sherwood Road or into Bittenbender Lane or the food and liquor parking lot, and then people are trying to cut across that middle lane to get into the southbound line, because that's where most of that traffic's gonna go, I'd be willing to bet. So I think you've got a problem in adopting a negative declaration here, because I think there's substantial evidence to support a fair argument that this could have a, a substantial impact on traffic and circulation. Now, admittedly, there is gonna be a time when the, the bypass is opened, that's gonna mitigate things somewhat, I mean, I don't know what the, the difference is gonna be, probably significant. So, you know, council members, what I'd ask you to do, I, I think you need to look at the traffic more thoroughly before you consider this project. If you do approve the project, I think you should put a, a time limit on it and have it come back so it can be evaluated in, in, in the light of practical experience that it come back so it can be evaluated in, in, in the light of practical experience that people are having, people like myself and my family and the people that are trying to get into my driveway. So, you know, this does not affect a lot of people, although I think that you'll find that on those heavy traffic days, it's gonna be a real nightmare for people making left turns off of, out of that exit from the bar. So, I, I don't think you should approve the project in its present form. I, I do not represent the Women's Christian Temperance Union, I'm, I'm just speaking for myself, thank you.
Thank you. The other, yes ma'am?
My name is Laura Herman, and I'm a teacher at the high school, and we learned about the, the opening of the bar about two months ago, and at our union meeting, we had a discussion, and we sent a letter, and I just wanted to correct it. The letter actually had three pages of signatures, I didn't count them, I would say it's quoted at thirty or forty-seven. And I just wanna say personally, I support local business people, having a successful business, I really wonder if there are any other locations around town where this business could be opened. I've driven up and down the street, not every single store is being used, so I think there's other locations. I do have a problem with the proximity to the high school. I'd like to read this letter to you and then maybe add a few personal comments addressing some of the questions that came up. So, it's addressed to the city council. Members of the Willets Teachers Association have learned that John's Place will be relocating in the old Sun Cycle Building about two-hundred and twenty-six feet south of Willets High School. We are deeply concerned about the decision to install a business serving alcoholic beverages so close to Willets High School and San Hadron High School. Even if this is merely a temporary solution, it is not a wise plan. It is common knowledge that teens are vulnerable to the influences of alcohol, and unlike most adults, they don't know their limits, they can be fearless about getting behind the wheel after drinking. The youth of Willets are even more vulnerable as many families are in the marijuana business. Values around intoxicants are blurred here more than in other, than in the average American town. The bar will be open during times we hold after-school events such as football games, concerts, plays, dances, graduations, et cetera. Our students will be walking past the establishment to and from these events which pose serious safety risks. I looked into the alcohol and beverage control ordinance about this, and I'd like to read it to you. The law says that the ABC may deny any retail license located within the immediate vicinity of churches and hospitals or within six-hundred feet of schools, public playgrounds, and nonprofit youth facilities. So it's gonna be illegal according to the ABC.
May.
It says they may, huh?
It does say that, it does say that they may. We are a small town, we are family friends and friends of friends, let's find ways to work together to support the health and education of our children as well as local businesses. And so, that's a letter from the teachers. I would just like to express a couple personal feelings, and that is that when you work with teenagers for a long time and when you learn about the research about, say, the teen brain, teenagers are literally hardwired to make bad decisions and then learn from their mistakes. And so, I think it's a little bit more subtle to me when you have alcohol being sold, whether it's Tower Mart or Vassar's or wherever, the message that the kids are getting is it's okay to drink alcohol, and it's not a direct thing where you can say, oh, this kid's gonna do this, or this kid's gonna do that, it's just a message. Another thing that I've learned...
Please try and wrap it up.
Okay, this is my last thing, I'll say it. The, the other thing that I've learned is that the culture of a town has a huge influence on the behavior of children, and our town is kind of unique because our culture in this town promotes marijuana. Granted, it's different than alcohol, but the kids are getting a different message than a lot of kids in a lot of towns. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Second, Dan, I'll get you next.
The first thing that crossed my mind as I watched the pictures of Brenda Warrenstein...
Thank you.
The first thing that caught my attention was the picture of the building and the fact that the entrance way was in the back of the building. And although some people thought that that was a great idea, my thought reminded me of a song, and I won't sing it because I'm off-key, "I know a dark secluded place." And to me, that entryway is a dark secluded place, and even though a respectable businessman is inside the building, one does not know what's going on outside the building. Plus, the parking lot, even though it may be bright, it's off-street, and it means that our security police will have to drive through and see if anything is actually happening in the parking space, parking lot. Whereas John's Place on Commercial Street, you know what was going on. Everybody was out front, and you saw what was going on in the parking lot. And so, those, those are my two concerns, the parking lot and the, the dark entryway in the back of the building.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes?
Hi, my name is Michaela Revling, and I do work for Dan Chesser at John's Place, and as being, being the bartender, and my responsibility is my job, and is to make sure that the, no matter what, everybody's safe. After a cocktail, before, I mean, when they get there, they're evaluated, and all, and so we, it's also our, our responsibility as bartenders that, no matter who comes through that door, that we ID them. And you can't get alcohol from somewhere if you don't have an ID, and it really doesn't matter if it's at Tower Mart or Vassar's, if everyone's doing their job, then nobody's gonna get that unless, unless you don't do your job, okay? So my job is to make sure that we're covered this way, 'cause I'm responsible for his business and his livelihood, which is also providing for my family and whatnot. And as growing up here, I know that that spot, and I have both my teenage children and various other chilneyses and nephews, that that spot, and it's been vacant for so long, has been a spot where kids go over there, and they have been going over there, and homeless people have been going over there for how many years, doing various things that are all, it's all bad. I noticed that since the fact that Dan has been there doing, making plans for all this, they run off a lot of people, homeless, kids, and whatnot, from doing things that we wouldn't want our community to be having done around there. So I look at it as a bright spot to be taking, taking something away from where bad things can happen. And our first and foremost responsibility is to make sure that everybody's safe, no matter where we're at, no matter what our location is, that everybody is as safe as we can make them, leaving there while they're there, and making it a, a good thing for everybody. And I really think that our town needs the revenue, and everybody has to follow rules, and we're all on board to make sure that the rules are gonna be taken care of and be, that's the way that it needs to be. And nobody's gonna be working there or around there that doesn't have the respect for that. And I, I mean, I feel like I can say that for me and speak for other people that are gonna be working there, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name's Jeannie King, and I'm married to Jim, so you know where I live, I live on Bittenbender, and I'm really concerned about the noise. During high school football games, we can hear every single word on the announcement, but that's on an occasional basis, that's not on a nightly basis. I don't know how they determine that blue area where the noise, you can hear noise from where this proposed bar is, but we're not included in that blue der, blue area at all, but we can hear the street dance on Fourth of July, we can hear Bruce playing his banjo, we can hear, and we can hear, literally, we can hear the announced words on a football game. So, the idea that a bar could be in that same area with nightly music from whatever time they start playing their music until two at night, in the morning, is really worrisome to me. And I've lived there for almost thirty years, and it really deeply concerns me about the noise. And as Jim said, the night, the traffic is a nightmare on that corner. And the traffic coming in and off Sherwood Road, the traffic going in and out of the high school, the traffic going in and out of Tower Mart, the traffic going, which is, includes Bittenbender Lane, it's, it's a bad traffic area. And to add another business where people are gonna have to try to cut across backed-up traffic to get into this establishment, I, you know, I just don't know how that's gonna all work out. So it's, both those things are worrisome to me.
I don't, uh, go ahead, excuse me.
And as a teacher, having taught at the high school and having two parents who died from alcoholism, bars worry me, and, but the fact that the entrance to the bar is not on Main Street takes some worry away from me, so, but I liked what Brenda had to say, I hadn't thought about that, so.
I, I do just wanna, I don't remember hearing it before, but it is in the use permit conditions that, if I, correct me if I'm wrong, Dusty, from 5:00 PM to 10:00 PM is what was going to be a permitted timeframe for live music, but it did not...
My husband goes to bed at eight.
Yeah. There's, there's some arguments you can't trump, but, but, anyway, I don't know that there has any specific addressing of outdoor entertainment, was it addressed in the...
It is, yeah.
I don't remember seeing, but anyway, I just, I just, for clarification, that several people brought up noise and that.
But even if it was indoors, if it was, if it was loud, it would, I bet it would...
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just telling you what...
Okay.
The hours of operation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, yeah, I think I saw a couple other hands here, yeah. Yes.
Dan has had a stroke, and it's hard for him to speak, so the only thing that's affected that, that means I have to speak for him. So I have to read it. I can't talk about the traffic, I know it's a problem, it's a traffic, is a problem all the way through town at the moment, which is why we're being bypassed, so, you know, we're just hoping for the best on it, and I assure that we will work this out. When Dan bought John's Place in 1982, it's supposed to be a five-year investment. When we sold in 2004, it was a twenty-two-year success story in many ways. It had become home to so many of our customers, friends, and employees, and they miss Dan, so he took over the running of it again, finally leasing it until the last, fire last year. Because we have invested a great deal of money, we really need to be back in business. Over the years, we have worked hard to run a good, law-abiding establishment. Our staff is well-trained, both by ABC and our own efforts, and diligent, hands-on management. In our thirty-two years of ownership, management, and leasing of the bar, we had no problems or citations with ABC regarding minors. This is probably the biggest concern regarding this permit, and I assure you, we have no desire to serve alcohol to minors in this town where we raised our own children. In regards to noisy and noise and safety concerns, we feel this location is ideal, all outside doors and windows open to the large back parking lot, and the occasional activities that may include acoustic music will take place during hours and days when school is not in session and traffic is lighter. The nearest homes are at least a block away, and we believe not an issue, but we can work with that. It is our hope that this location is temporary and the Old John's will be rebuilt in the near future. John's has been an institution in Willets for eighty-plus years and serves its purpose well. We appreciate the support of our friends and the consideration of the council in bringing it back.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else that would like to address this topic? Yeah.
Hi, my name's Alan, I'm the owner of the property. Since John has been in there working, he's put up a wall between the two buildings where the kids used to go through and traipse through and smoke and everything else, and since he's been there, I haven't seen any kids there. The amount of derelicts has decreased about eighty percent. I used, I go there every day, so I know what's going on. I used to have to go every day and pick up trash from derelicts. I go there maybe and have to pick up maybe once a week, sometimes two times in two weeks. It's dropped dramatically, and he's gonna be putting a fence up, which is gonna increase the safety of those, that property. As far as traffic goes, have you ever tried to get out of Taco Bell and go south? It's the same story. Once the highway goes down, I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of difference, but right, your traffic all the way through town is the same problem. So I think an institution that's been around here for years has proven itself as being a good management and be a good place for it to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Excuse me, sir, how long have you owned the property?
I've owned it for five years, and I've been putting up with derelicts and kids for five years.
What, what, what was your aspiration when you purchased?
I did not purchase it. I had loaned some money to the previous owners, they did not pay, I had foreclose on.
Okay, thank you. Yes?
Good evening, my name is Suprina Rodriguez, and I'm here to speak from the perspective of three different things. First of all, traffic, I lived in Brook Trails for many years, I now live in Willets. Traffic is a huge concern, not only for people of this community, the people that travel up Brook Trails, but it's also a safety concern in terms of our students that are crossing the street. I believe we're gonna see an increase in the number of accidents, which, which exposes our youth to more hazards. As a school board trustee, I'm not in favor of a bar that is within the proximity, and I know that it is something that will come before the Willets Unified School District Board of Trustees, and will weigh in on the decision, and I can tell you that as a board member, I'm not in favor of this project. I have concerns, I was a neighbor on a, on a, from a different perspective, I did own the preschool imagination station that was located next door. I found that my relationship with the bar was good and bad in terms that when I first moved in there, Charter School told me about the concerns that they had, I believe, when I moved in there, I was leasing the property that was facing Marin Street, and I was serving young children during the daytime. When I originally moved in there, it didn't have a lot of problems other than the trash that was left along the street, a lot of alcoholic bottles and that sort of thing. As the business expanded, I moved deeper into the building, which put me a wall between myself and the bar. We ran into more problems then because of the, the daytime noise. Dan Chesser and I did speak, and I found him very easy to talk to about, and we had come to an agreement early with the property owner that there would not be any loud mu, any loud music or anything during the daytime. That didn't happen all the time, although Dan was easy to speak to, he reassured me. We still had several incidences where during the daytime, the noise was a factor, and I would discourage the city from approving this, but if they did approve it, I would like to see that there isn't any music during the daytime, because I do believe that it, that it affects the youth that are walking in the area, that it affects the residences that are nearby, and I'm concerned about how we're going to deal with the trash that will inevitably, and, and vandalism, because there's going to be vandalism, there typically is vandalism, and has been in the past, and I've experienced the vandalism that's related. The bar had trash nonstop on the backside of the building, and I expressed concern to the property owner when I... the property owner when I was next door, that I was always worried about the amount of couches and trash on the backside. So I would ask that the bar have a plan in place, or the city make sure they adhere to the fact that there isn't any trash and daytime noise. With all these concerns in place, I also sympathize with Mr. Chesser in the fact that he owned a business, and I know what an impact this potentially had on him, as I myself suffered a significant financial loss in being displaced. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Jerry?
I guess what I wanna point out is, I kind of agree with a lot of things that have been said here. Al, I try to make sure that during school, I drive through that property all the time, 'cause we chatted about, we've had a lot of transient problems there. We've found a lot of kids smoking marijuana, being truant back on that property. That's why when I was talking to Dusty, we wanted to make sure that it was fenced to keep them away from you and your folks away from them, so to speak. I think the big difference this time is that there's- there wasn't a bar in this town that wasn't in existence, probably even when Bruce was a kid, it had existed. And so therefore, we didn't have a lot of say over certain conditions, they were pre-existing. Now you- in this use permit, there's some things we wanted to see, because frankly, if you had an existing bar and they wanted to bring in the midget wrestling, they technically could. And with the new conditions, we will have a say, I would hope we can work together. I work with all our alcohol establishments, both on sale, off sale, and I try to kind of have that relationship with them. But I can tell you in all honesty, there is not a single alcohol establishment in town that we have not had nuisance issues with over the years. Probably been swung at at every bar in town, had fights where I've been assaulted. I probably have arrested people at every off-sale and on-sale place in town. That's just the reality, if you have an alcohol establishment. One of the reasons why when we have alcohol events at city property, where we want them to have security, because alcohol tends to let people loosen up a little bit, and sometimes it's not to the positive. We stand prepared to work with John's Place, I do have the same concerns about it approximately the school. Noise was a big issue when we were talking, and frankly, we've had issues at some of the other bars with their open mic nights and on a hot day, leaving the doors open. It does- sound does carry, and we've had residents nearby at the two other bars that are still an establishment that complained about noise, but we have to come in and see the bartender and say, can you please close your door? Sometimes we've had to come by, and I'll be honest with you, I know I've gone to John's a couple times and said, you gotta close the door, and you know, because the noise would just carry so much. So, that's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
Jerry, I know we have- I read about like undercover stings that go on for some of the places that sell the mini-marts and things like that, where people will go in. I don't know if the school does that, or who does it?
No, we've had shoulder tap things that we've done in the past, working with ABC.
Yeah.
ABC will also go in. We do refer reports, things like assaults, those sort of things to ABC. I think what you have to keep in mind is, you're approving a use permit today. At some point in time, ABC is gonna weigh in what happens today, but also take community input, and they will look heavily on that distance to the bar, school, and will be looking for comment from the public on that. It's not a done deal for the bar to go in, because the public has a chance to weigh in with ABC. There is an oversaturation in this county with alcohol establishments. The big change here for John's Place is that it's not like they rebuilt where they were at, it's a whole new location, a whole new license. That's what brings them under scrutiny of ABC again, and so.
Dusty, I think my question's probably for you, and I'm not sure, does a bar, is it selling on sale or off sale alcohol?
On sale.
On sale.
It potentially could be both.
No.
No, that's-
Liquor licenses are-
Nothing in, nothing-
Excuse me, excuse me.
It appears that there are specific licenses for the onsite-
Yeah, I mean, that's my question. Is- is it conceivable that this facility could come back at a future time and provide the same retail sales that is- that went on down at John's Place? I would think that most of the trash and that sort of stuff was coming out of the liquor store, not out of the bar, but so I am curious if that is a logical or prohibited, or just another- another application process to be providing those, you know, a quick stop or, you know, a mini-market kind of thing with alcohol sales in there as well?
Staff's understanding that they would have to make application with ABC to get that type of liquor license, and that certainly would be something that would come before the council to- for them to recognize what's being requested. Certainly through the use permit, you can set conditions, and if there was a concern of the, if you wanna say council, I guess it's the commission, that, you know, they were not interested in wanting to see off-sale liquors at this site due to a number of factors, including, you know, refuse piling up on the property.
But it clearly is not part of this application.
I have not seen their liquor license, I'm not familiar with it. I was just going off of what I was hearing from the audience, so we might wanna confirm that with the applicant.
Yes.
There's no way we want another convenience.
Okay, okay, well, I just- I just trying to clarify that. You know, one of the- one of the things, no, that's good, I'd comment to the council or to the community. I mean, one of the struggles I have with the traffic impacts, and I'm not arguing that they're not there and they're not real and they won't get worse, but that is a piece of property that is there, and whether that facility would create more traffic than, you know, the last thing I remember, there is a bicycle store, and that's been quite a long time. I remember a guy had a little redwood parquet siding flooring business there before that, and it was a bulk oil storage place, and so it's undoubtedly got some issues regarding that that probably are better left unsaid today. But, you know, the- at some point in the future, there is gonna be, you know, a reuse of that property, and it is going to need to accommodate traffic. And so I don't know how we can particularly single out that traffic. I have a hard time figuring out how to single out the traffic issue as being, that I don't want the traffic, well, I can't condemn the guy's property and say that can't have his property, can't use his property. So that one, I'm struggling with a little bit. Is there any other comments up here?
Yeah, just a couple. So Jerry has made a mo- I mean, Larry has made a motion, but I just wanna clarify for the public-
I think I need-
It hasn't been seconded yet.
Well, I need a motion subsequent to the public hearing. Larry, would you care to make your motion?
I will do it. I move that staff recommendation that we have- we approve the permit U fourteen dash oh three, subject to conditions and approval recommended by the staff.
And I just wanted, I will second that. I just wanted to make sure that the public knows that there is a lot of conditions that are being put on this, and one of them for the sound is amplification for music between five PM, so that's not during the day, five PM and ten PM, so not after ten PM. So even though they're open till two, you know, the amplified music would need to be done by then. And there's a number of other conditions. It is challenging, 'cause when I spoke of this in the community and I mentioned to people that this was gonna happen, a lot of people were like, oh, 'cause of the traffic issue. And I think the proximity to the school, but at the same time, from a planning commissioner point of view, I don't think there's a basis to reject the application. I do think the traffic is an issue, but I also know that we have a Caltrans planning grant to look at the design of our downtown and how- what the traffic flow and pedestrian safety things are gonna be, and I think we absolutely need to focus on the area by the school. There's no sidewalks in front of the high school right now, for example, you know, that those are things that we're- I think we all wanna be able to drive safely around this area.
Yes, it has. I asked if there's any further public comment, and I heard none, so. You know, and excuse me, if you would- if you would come in and sit down, I will see to it that you get a chance to comment, even though it's closed. But we do have a motion and a second, and we're gonna finish our discussion up here, and then I will take that comment.
So I do- I'm not done. So I do just wanna clarify that there are conditions, and I don't think we need to read all of them, 'cause many of them are very dry, but it does include the fencing, the lighting. I think the lighting will be really key, especially, the fencing will be very key because of the proximity to this creek. There's often the derelicts, I thought that was a good terminology. The derelicts often throw stuff into the creek from that side, so I think that will be very important to make sure that we follow up on. And I like the camera protection system. The noise is a huge concern, and I- I don't think I need to ask that it be added as an additional condition, but if there could be some sort of sound, sound reducing, I know the pub has some sound reducing things, especially on the roof and west wall, I think it would be a neighborly thing to do, because I know that everyone up on Bittenbender is gonna be the most impacted by that. But I will- I will be supporting it with the conditions that we have put forward.
Ron, did you have a comment?
Yeah, you know, when I first read this, my first reaction was, oh no, not another bar. I took a drive over the weekend, drove onto the property to get a sense of what it was all about, the traffic, you know, it was kinda busy. And like I said, the first reaction was, oh no, we do not need bars in this community. But that's kind of a moralistic point of view, because they exist, and even though I personally don't go to bars, I do drink alcohol. But, you know, it's a personal choice. And, you know, it's not- it's not what a lot of people would like to see, but it is what it is, and we have a diverse population. So I have to sort of separate myself from that, you know, this whole moral high ground position, and look at it as a business. You know, we have an empty building that doesn't look so super right now, and it'd be nice to, you know, put it to some use. You know, the lighting and the presence of the staff, and as you pointed out, you know, with people there on the property, it's gonna be less trash and people hanging around than there is with an empty property. And, you know, we live in a- we live in a small community. The question I raised before about school kids, I mean, any kid will walk down the street and pass by a bar or a liquor store, or a tobacco store, or a head shop, or whatever, you know, we're not gonna protect our kids from the world. And in fact, my kids are grown up, so, you know, I don't have that to deal with. My grandkids live far away, so I don't have to worry about them, that's their parents' problem. But I can remember back in the day, when you start to talk to your kids about smoking or drinking or stuff like that, you know, you get the eye roll. And, you know, are we really protecting our kids from exposure to evil demon rung by, you know, keeping these places away from them? They're gonna find it, they know about it. They probably know more about it than I do. So I guess that's the reality of the thing. And I guess when I sum all that up together, if I had my druthers, I would rather see something else, you know, coming into the- into the community, but, you know, that's not the case, and that doesn't- there are people who use these sorts of facilities, and I'm not here to judge one way or the other, or even imply a judgment. So I would be okay with it.
Do we have any other comments up here? Yes?
Yeah. I'm finding this to be a very difficult decision to make, because for one thing, I'm very sensitive to the comments that were made by the teachers' union and so many of the teachers that are concerned about the message that this sends and the proximity to the school. So I think that's still a very important factor to me. I also, I do think a lot of the conditions address a lot of the noise issues. They're not gonna solve it completely, and probably any place you put a bar, there's gonna be people that are affected by it, so I'm not too swayed by that. But I also think about that people leaving the parking lot and turning left across the left turn lane for those who are going off to Brook Trails, that's- that means they have this whole line of cars in front of them, and they're trying to get through that line of cars and figure out what's coming the other way and then turn. And to me, that is really a pretty dangerous situation, especially if they're inebriated, which they might be. So that factor and the teachers' concerns, you know, it's really hard, because I also feel like the empty building there isn't an asset to the community, and we wanna have good businesses, and this has been a well-run business. So it's not an easy decision, but I'm kinda leaning towards not voting yes.
So I said that I would take one more public comment. Would you like to come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and we've got three minutes that we're offering for public comment.
My name is Marshia Heatherington. I've lived here since nineteen eighty-six. I remember that because my daughter was born in eighty-five, and she's gonna be thirty this year. I worked at John's Quick Stop for about nine months, and it was in the late eighties, early nineties. And the bar next door, it had three shifts. It had the people that came in the morning, it had the people that came in the afternoon, and it had the people that came in the evening. And I can tell you personally that when I see traffic backed up to Yokums or even down to Bethel Grove, I go, I'm gonna go sightseeing through the valley, I'm just not gonna sit in traffic. So yes, traffic is a problem, but people adjust. They make different decisions on where and how to go, and I'm sorry, before I came over here, I looked up on the internet, sound walls, and, you know, that might be something that could be explored personally or as a group or whatever. I just feel that this business has always been an asset to this community, and that if you ever went to John's Place and saw all the pictures of the old timers, you'd understand that this place is a legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. So my final comments, the only one that hasn't chimed in here, is that I would fully support John's Place, being grandfathered back into the place where it is. I think it has every right to be there without the consultation of this council, in my opinion. But, you know, I don't support it. I don't support it next to the school, I don't support it. And it's not a traffic thing. I think that it's an inappropriate place, and for this- I think that it's an inappropriate place for this establishment. I hope they can, I don't, I don't understand why this hasn't been reconstructed in a prompt manner, it was, it's been a very delayed process to even get it demolished. It's, and I'm fully supportive of him getting his business back going there. I don't think it's an appropriate place because of its location, and it's not a traffic, but it is, it's, it, you know, I'm just tired of seeing a continual demoralization of standards, you know, I'm just, I'm just, and it's, it's probably a poor decision to use this as a, as the focal of that, but we've got, you know, we've got to turn around the way we act and run our life and the influences that we are willing to expose our young people to, and I'm, so, that's all I got to say about it. Roll call vote, please.
Excuse me, Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Steven Strong?
No.
Madal.
Yes.
Warrenstein?
No.
No.
No. Fails on a three-two. Thank you for your comments this evening. You still have every right to bring that to the ABC, and they're the ultimate authority of that, I think, aren't they? Ours is an advisory, well, ours is a use permit, we denied the use permit.
Point of clarity, with the local jurisdiction denying the use permit, it'll not go forward to the ABC.
Okay. Thank you. Right. We are going to move on. I'd be glad to talk to you individually later on, but we're going to move on if I need So we're going back to the consent calendar. Oh, update on the emergency water supply, do we have that? And then maybe Carl will, I think Carl's going to make.
Can I excuse myself for a minute?
Pardon?
Can I excuse myself?
Yes. Go ahead.
Real quickly, the replacement Liaswell is in, and the twenty-four hour pump test has been completed. I don't have the report yet, but the, all indications are that it's a very, very good well. So we tested it four hundred gallons per minute, and the results were very positive. So once we get all that information, we'll present that to council. The well has been connected to the groundwater treatment plant, and we're getting ready to pump water there. Actually, we got water to the facility, we're loading the media in the filters yesterday and today. We have a little snag with our filter consultant that came on site to help us load the media and do the startup, which could push us into next week, but we still expect to have a substantial completion inspection, if necessary, from the Division of Drinking Water, and we're hoping to get them up here next week. And we'll have some kinks to work out and some bugs to work out as we move into the, into the next month, but as we, we've been pushing for, for months now, we expect to be, we're considered ninety-five percent right now, we expect to be ninety-nine whatever percent by the end of next week. So we're not going to be putting well water, treated well water into our, our system at this time, but we will have it available in case of emergency. You know, that's part of the future project. And I would say that for the last, for the last couple of months, there's been a lot of work done by staff, primarily Public Works Maintenance Crew, and in the last week, they've pulled some, they worked over the weekend, and that's happened several times in the past weeks, and Monday night, they worked till ten PM and got back up, and we're back to work at five AM, so. They're, so, I'd say, should they should be commended for the effort that they're putting in to getting this project done. Sorry.
Rod, you said you didn't read all the reports yet, but do you have a sense of how the drawdown test went?
The drawdown was minimal for twenty-four hours, that's all I, that's all I know, that it was, it was characterized as an amazing well by weeks drilling, so.
Amazing well, that's great.
So it'll definitely be an asset to, to this community, so.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Carl, I believe you have a presentation.
And Rod, thank, thank all of those workers who put in all that extra time.
Am I blocking anybody's views from here?
No.
No?
You're going to stick it out.
Well. There's dust when you need it.
This is, is this on our?
Do you want me to come help you?
Is this presentation on our agenda someplace?
No.
No.
It's just, it's kind of a continuation from the last council meeting when we were talking about fire, the fire season in relation to the drought.
It's just a, it's just a few screenshots. Okay. Oh, it does, okay. So I want to thank the board and for this limited time tonight. I was approached by staff to kind of give a running report of this year compared to previous years. I'm also set on part of the drought committee, the ad hoc committee for Mendocino County, representing the Mendocino County Fire Chiefs. So there's a ton of information that's available to us. To start with, we look at the, this is for the continental U.S., and you can see white basically means that you're at the normal water conditions for that time of year. So you see as you get, and this all deals with this timeframe in July. So I went through July twenty-ten four, so you can see the comparison across the continental U.S. So twenty-ten, basically, we're, we're at normal drying conditions. We get into twenty-one, you can see the shift of the drought conditions down to the southern part of the U.S. We get into twenty-twelve, then you see where we start having the effect of the drought in California and on the west coast there. So once again, the white is your average, and then, hard to read the color. Bruce, can you see the color, like yellow, what percentage of that?
Yeah.
Abnormally.
Oh, abnormally low.
Abnormally low, so, anyway, yellow, you know, is cautionary, the tan, a little worsening conditions. When you get into the red, that's the extreme drought, and you can see it as the map progress. So we get into twenty-thirteen, you know, we had a little bit shift in the drought conditions across the U.S. again, and we are in the, you know, the moderate, pardon? Severe. Severe, okay, with that color rendition. Then we get into twenty-fourteen, last year, and, you know, once again, lack of the rainfall, lack of the cumulative water within the U.S., especially in California now, and we're losing our groundwater, our surface water, and that's where we're having concern on the fireside. And the other thing that deals with this, with the drought condition, is the drying of the green fuels and the, and the dry fuels. And then we get into the drought monitor for, you know, twenty-fifteen, and we've kind of shifted a little bit because we had those showers, but it changed it, but we're still in a, you know, severe to extreme drought, drought condition. And I just want to bring that forward, just so you get a kind of a visual cue of what's been happening to us, you know, compared to the, to the U.S. So this next screen there deals with what we call thousand-hour fuels. So these are the dead fuels that are three inches to eight inches in diameter. And when you get into the yellow, like we are in Mendocino County right now, we're at eleven to fifteen percent of the fuel moisture. So what's happened in July, because we've had, we haven't had the precipitation, our relative humidity across the day has gotten drier, and in a week's time, these fuels are affected by rain or drying conditions. So what it's telling us as firefighters, that our larger fuels, our three to eight inch fuels, are ready to burn right now. Normally, we don't see this until September, you know, late August, early September, when we start seeing these type of fuel conditions on the, on the dead fuels. It's kind of alarming for us.
Can I just ask, on that, the green that you got in the eastern, all that, is that less fire danger then?
Yeah, what it means is that the, those three to eight inch fuels, those thousand-hour fuels are retaining fuel moisture, and it's probably because of current rain or they have high relative humidity, which prevents those large dead fuels from drying now.
So the percents are, how dry it is?
That, yeah, so what we're saying is the dead fuels, three to eight inch, have ten to eleven to fifteen percent of the available fuel moisture, which means that they're ready to burn.
God, okay.
Does it look like Nebraska to you?
Did that rain, did that like one day of rain help us at all?
It changes what they call the one-hour fuels, the light flashy fuels, the grasses, big hills, they'll, they'll gain and lose their fuel moisture in an hour time, that's why it's called an hour fuel. So, yeah, it brings the fuel moistures up on that and makes them a little less susceptible, you know, to fire condition, but an hour later, it's going to change. You know, the hundred-hour fuels will change basically in a hundred hours, a thousand-hour fuels, a thousand hours of, you know, plus or minus of water conditions. So fire activity across the California remains high, nearly four hundred and twenty wildfires in just this last week, this is as of today. Since the beginning of the year, firefighters from CAL FIRE, the U.S. Forest Service have responded to four thousand five hundred and one wildfires across the state, burning a total of sixty-five thousand acres. And if you read through this, this is well above the five-year average. This year's two times what it was last year, and two times, or last year was two times what it was the previous year. So we're seeing worsening conditions. What's benefited California this fire season, as we don't, haven't had the wind conditions, and we haven't had the red flag conditions that have caused extreme fire spread. So they're able to get enough resources on these fires, they kept them small, fairly small, and keep them from becoming these large-scale confederations, which is good for us. Continued weather right now is drying seasonally, you know, seasonal temperature expected over the next few days statewide, and then we're going to start seeing some warming conditions into the mid, later part of the week. There's a possibility of thunderstorms till about Sunday, mostly in the interior valley. Shasta got hammered last night and had over two thousand down strikes in Shasta County. And as far as I know, I don't believe there's any significant fire starts because of that. There's probably enough rain came with it, so it helped mitigate that. You know, this is our wildland fire potential outlook for July of twenty-fifteen, and it's fairly significant. So when you get into the red zone, we have an above-normal chance of a significant fire event occurring. And once again, it's because of the, the drought conditions that we saw earlier. As we get into August, you know, we get closer, the white is our average, we get closer into our average potential for fires, and then we get back into September and October, then we're back into our, our average for this time of year, September and October. And one of the reasons we get into averages is because of the, we have, the days are shorter, and the angle of the sun decreases on the horizon there, so we don't have the fuel warming during the day. So that's where we look at. Any questions on any of this stuff? Just out of curiosity.
Was there, was, I already asked my own about the rain, but was there a fire in Brook Trails the other day?
Not that I was aware of.
Okay. Someone asked me about it, and they said not that I was aware.
Yeah, they had three down strikes in Cobalow on Monday, but they, I think largest was like a third of that. So fire prevention measures, you know, continue, and, you know, in the state responsibility area within our valley and within our city limits also, you know, try to maintain adequate space around your houses, be cautious in your outdoor activities, early notification of fires, you know, if you see smoke, if you're not sure, you know, call somebody, if you have a start, don't try to fight it yourself, do some notification, get people out there. And we need an all-out effort by all members of our community to be fire safe. You know, aggressive fire attack, we've got a lot of resources available, because we don't have the big-scale fires, we get in early, get enough resources on it, get those fires out. Yeah, that's it on my presentation.
Good, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, Carl.
Fourth of July.
Everybody be careful, especially mowing. Carl, is there any, do they, in those forty-five hundred starts in California, do they break that down as to how many of those are lightning and how many of them are man?
There is, but I didn't go that far into the information. You know, irregardless of the type of start, with the field behavior and the weather condition, you know, I mean, fires start small, so, you know, whether it's accidental or on purpose or it's by nature. So those weather conditions and fuel conditions are what affects the fire growth.
Sure. Thank you. All right, let's see if we get back to our normal, we're going, we finally made it to the consent calendar.
I'll move, we approve the consent calendar, except for item C, pulling that one.
And the council minutes are not on?
I'd like, you know, we're.
I approve B.
I want to talk about B, so.
All right.
Let's, we're, and B is the, minutes are polled, we'll deal with them individually. And so my question for staff is, I think I went back here, it was, we've been with Ricardi since two thousand and five or something like that.
Four.
Yeah, four. How, how much of a struggle, thank you, Susie. Is the lateness of the hour preclude us from taking this out to an RFP at this point?
For an RFP, it's a little late, yeah.
A little late, way late?
But, yeah, but we do intend to do an RFP for, we'll probably put it out in February of this year for next year.
I think it's really, really, you know, and I have no criticism of Ricardi, but I.
But we need to make sure we're still getting the best thing for our.
Well, we, it's priced, but, but it is also, auditors need to be, you know, have kind of a five-year, I think, a five-year lifespan.
So there's actually a law that says, I think it's somewhere between six and ten, that you can only have the same auditor, you can have the same audit firm as long as your auditor changes.
I see.
So we're within, you know, we're legal, but I just want to make sure.
But you are, so you, we do have different auditors from that firm?
Yes.
Okay. All right, well, I, I would like to see us make sure that we.
We definitely will.
Look at a new, and again, it's not, it's just for the policy, not the, so.
I will move.
So let's, let's.
I'll move that we approve the professional services contract with RJ Ricardi.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any public comment? Roll call vote.
What are we voting on again?
Just item B.
All right.
Auditors.
Ruschansky?
Yes.
Strong?
Yes.
Madal?
Yes.
Warrenstein?
Yes.
Mayor Burden?
Yes. So Larry, you wanted to?
I just, my, I read the application, why does it, why does she want it?
I'm, I'm happy that she does.
I don't know why she wants it, but I do, I'm acquainted with Ms. Ricardi, and I know that she is a parent and involved, so I think she would do an excellent job.
I was a little surprised she didn't write.
But the application has kind of left me blank, I mean, I.
Yes.
She didn't, she didn't expand about, at all about why she wanted to do it.
Yeah.
That's true. And I, I do wonder about the effectiveness of the, from my conversation. That's true, and I, I do wonder about the effectiveness of the, from my conversations with library commission members, they have questioned their effectiveness, especially given some of the bigger county issues that they're dealing with, but since we do have a commission, and someone is willing to serve on it, I would be happy to move that we appoint Niaosa Card to represent us on the county library advisory board.
There's a second. Any comment on this? Roll call vote, please.
Ask her, Mr.?
Yes.
Stop?
Yes.
Madal? Yes. Can you speak?
Yep.
Mayor Burden?
Sure.
Ask her.
Okay. Right to appeal, persons who are dissatisfied with the decision, city council may have a right to review that decision by court. The city's adopted ten ninety-four point six, the code of civil procedure. It generally limits to ninety days' time within its decisions. City boards and agents may be due to this challenge. On that regard, the, the action that the city took this evening, was sitting as the planning commission, and decisions of the planning commission can be appealed to the city council, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, there is a possible recourse to the, and I meant to, it didn't occur to me at the appropriate time, but I would like to make sure that they-
I believe they've already been informed about it.
They've been, they get informed.
It happens to be the same five people.
It does, but you know, it, the opportunity is there for them to come back with some additional information, and, and clarify their application in some way that may change somebody's mind.
Right. So I just want to make sure that they, they get that information. City manager reports?
Yes, well, first I want to report that Reach is officially, fully operational at the airport. They moved into their building, I want to say, a couple of weeks back. Their certificate of occupancy was issued right before I left on my vacation, and then they made their actual move a couple of weeks ago. They are going to be one of the main sponsors and attractions at Airport Day on September thirteenth. So I just want to say that I, I'm glad that they're there, that we've gotten through this process, and I'm, you know, I appreciate the fact that they hung in there, and they had tremendous community support, and, and they have felt that. The Arts Center, the, they are maintaining activities, you know, with their monthly shows, and just working on some efforts such, I think right now, they're trying to figure out how to get the building painted, and they've approached the city about how we might partnership on that. And I may have something to report back at the next meeting on that. Jerry will probably speak more about this, but there was some vandalism on Main Street and East Commercial in front of some businesses early yesterday morning, and I wanted to bring this up, because I saw briefly on Facebook that there is an effort underway, volunteer effort underway, that they're going to be meeting Saturday morning, I believe at nine a.m., for anybody that's interested to come out with, and basically do a work party. I don't know if Jerry or John have more information about that. Committee meetings, some of them have been scheduled. Kathy can give some dates on that when we get to committee reports. The sphere of influence, sphere of influence process with LAFCO. I am probably going to be coming back at one of the August meetings to request an ad hoc committee meeting to be established for a short period of time, just so we can get that scheduled and that reviewed in a way. The Main Street Planning Grant Project Kickoff Meeting will be scheduled here in the next few short weeks. We actually had a meeting with Caltrans, I don't know, a week or two before my vacation, that was originally intended to be a project kickoff meeting, but they kind of got ahead of the, of the cycle. They met with us anyway to go over a number of areas of mutual interest, and I think that while John was there, and so was Rod, we were very pleased with that meeting, and they seemed to be very open and interested in working with the city, and, and what our feedback is. So when we actually have the project kickoff meeting shortly thereafter, we'll be involving the community stakeholders in, in a more hands-on fashion. Somewhat related to that, PG&E, our Rule Twenty-A liaison, came Tuesday morning, Tuesday morning, was it Tuesday morning? And, and did a, what they call a verification walk on the alley, the proposed alley project on West Van Lane. She brought an engineer with her, and Rod was out there for that, just to get a better sense of what's going to be entailed, so they can come back with more information for us. So just a reminder that as we move along in this process, this project's being proposed by several of the downtown business people, but you will have to come back before the city council to do a number of things, one of, one of which would be to establish an undergrounding district, if it's the council's desire to allocate any, any funding towards this project. And then you'll have to determine how much funding of our accruals that you would, you want to allocate for that. Labor negotiations are ongoing, and we had a special meeting right before tonight's regular session to get a report from our labor negotiator on that. We're still working through the implementation of the Mior Plan. And then, I think Bruce will probably want to talk more about this, but we did have a visit from our state senator, Mike Maguire, earlier this week, and I'll let you share about that one.
All right.
And then lastly, I just want to say thank you to staff for keeping everything hoovered down in my absence. It was nice to get away, and know that everything was in good hands.
Let's move on to department recommendations. Anything from the city clerk?
No, at this time.
Finance, anymore? Sure.
I just wanted to let you know, you all know that we've been working with Howard Foundation to get them bank qualified, and it sounds like Esco's going to close either Friday or Monday, so we're really excited about that, and get that done. Accounting's working on the overhead allocation, and gearing up for the audit, getting all of the year-end stuff, trying to finish that up. So this is our busy time of year, and we're just chugging along.
And we all got our nicely found budgets. Thank you for that.
Good, and the budget had an additional ten thousand dollars revenue in the general fund, I don't know if you noticed that or not, but that's our, it was the fee that we get to charge to Howard Foundation for doing the financing.
All right, thank you.
There we go.
Yep, okay. Let's move on to public safety, anything more from the chief?
I'll be brief, given the late hour. Frontier Days, actually, it was kind of a rather quiet Frontier Days, I really want to thank. Frontier Days, they changed some things regarding the dances this year. We didn't have the usual issues that we've had there. We did staff up for those, but again, not a lot of problems to report there. There was a little issue at the parade, we're working with the folks at Frontier Days, and our Black Park gunfighters to resolve that, and it's still under investigation, otherwise I would comment. We did have some vandalism, we do have somebody that we're looking at, and I want to thank the community. We were able to get some video, which I'm hoping will help us out. Problem with misdemeanor offenses, especially now that a lot of things are misdemeanors, are that we can't arrest for those things right away, we have to send it through the district attorney's office. So we will be looking at the evidence we've gathered so far, and hopefully refer a case to the district attorney in that case, so.
Public Works and Engineering, anymore?
Quick updates, the two big projects going on in town right now, Humboldt Street and Della Avenue Water Main Replacement. Humboldt Street's going along rather quickly, and they're doing a lot of sidewalk work, and it looks really good. I know there's some, some disarray, and some concerns about traffic control, and I'm going to get with Jeremy tomorrow, and we're going to talk about some options for traffic control and pedestrian safety that maybe we can improve on with the contractor, so. Other than that, they've been doing good work, they seem really easy to work with. So, the projects-
Who's the contractor in that job?
RAO.
Out of Eureka.
Eureka, yeah, so.
And maybe Adrian and I were talking to someone the other day, and just explaining to them that the intersection at Mendocino, for those who don't know, it's a raised ramp. So some people think that there's no ADA ramps on that intersection, but in fact, it's just a raised intersection, so it's going to be really nice, I think, with that.
Yeah. Pearl Street's also a raised intersection, so we'll have two raised intersections, and then the bulbout's here at Van Lane, so it's, it's going to be nice.
And the raised intersections are also traffic calming to some extent, or they slow people down a little bit?
Yeah, they'll, I mean, there are stop signs at Mendocino, but Van Lane-
That should slow them down.
That'll slow them down. But yeah, then the, the Pearl Street one will be, hopefully have some traffic calming effects. Other than that, that product, that contract's scheduled for completion September third, it's a ninety-day contract, so rate they're going though, they should be done before that, because the paving shouldn't take very long. Della Avenue, we're anticipating completing that project by the end of next week. We have quite a bit of work to do, but to this point, we put in twelve hundred feet of new six-inch water main. As we all know, we used MCS for the excavation up to this point, and we're going to finish it out on our own. The, we also used whiff to go, to do a bore and jack, a twelve-inch casing underneath the box culvert, which was a construction time decision. Turned out what was, the existing line was, was the four-inch steel line, which was in bad need of replacement, to another four-inch line, and it went down to, to a four-inch ductile iron, went down to a twelve-inch ductile iron underneath the, the box culvert. So we decided to leave that live, and put in plastic line, new plastic, new six-inch plastic, so that people stay in water until we're done, and then we'll connect all the services out to the, we've pressure tested it to this point, and everything's been good. We fixed, I want to say, half a dozen leaks on our way, because we're going right next to the old pipe, and as we would get down there, we'd find, we, we knew that we had one leak, but we would find additional leaks, and then we patched those leaks, and leaks would spring up in between. Just, it was a very good, just said, you guys think we should have replaced this line, or, you know, just leave it and wait for five years after the county paves it? I don't know how many gallons per minute, or gallons per day we were losing, we've been losing in that line for some time, but since it's been repaired so many times, and there's all this base that we've put back in there, these leaks were not surfacing until we dug a trench next to them, so. Otherwise, overall, it's been a good project, not without its challenges, and the leaks have delayed us a little bit, and the ability to get slurry to backfill our trench has been, has been a little bit of a delay. We're competing with the bypass, and we're competing with the Bridge and Road to Valley, and our own project here, Humboldt, and so, it's been, but, let you know, it's all done.
Good.
Okay?
Just a quick thing, I was talking to Scott Herman about the water plant, and how he was saying we should go check it out, and I had mentioned to Adrian that it might be worthwhile for all of us to go, you know, to have a field trip. I mean, I can go up, obviously, on my own, but other council members might be interested also, and-
Sure.
-finding a time, and we're not going to be disrupting things, and checking out all the work that's been done up there.
Yeah, I think it would be a, a good visit, a good, a good time to visit, when everything's new, so.
If we wanted to do that as a group, we would have to have that be public notice.
That's correct.
Yep.
Thank you, Rod.
Thanks.
So, I think we've covered the water and wastewater systems. Let's go on to committee reports. MCOT?
Did not meet.
LAFCO?
LAFCO met, we're going over the MSRs for the fire districts.
We'll be meeting tomorrow at one thirty, here in Willets, at the risk complex, I believe. It's hard to mention again, because that last meeting, I sort of forgot, that there is now a new service, twice-a-day service going down to Santa Rosa, so people that want to take advantage of that, go on the MTA website and find out the schedules, it's a great improvement.
Hasn't met.
EDFC?
EDFC met about two weeks ago, and will be meeting again, not until August thirteenth. And can I just want to mention that, too? They're, they're kind of reviving the idea of a incubator work space, and instead of the city jail, that did not seem to be a suitable site, they're looking at the Uchiha Methodist Church as a potential site for that, and there will, the next meeting will probably be at that location to check it out, and then they'll have an open house for businesses that are interested in participating in that.
The League met in beautiful Trinidad, it was actually, it was actually a sunny day, it was gorgeous.
Hey, Mom.
No, not the highlands, the small community. There was actually a really interesting panel on vacation rental, rentals, internet vacation rentals, which I don't think is so much of an issue for Willets currently. These are the Airbnbs and the VRBOs and things like that. It is certainly an issue in Mendocino, and Fort Bragg, and Trinidad, where they're actually putting a cap on how many rentals can be, because even though it's a great way for people to make income off their property, the mayor, who supports them, and has stayed in these rentals, she no longer has neighbors, you know, because they're all vacation rentals around her, so they want, how to balance retaining your community while having that income. And while I say that it's not so much of an issue for us right now, I was just speaking to someone in Leightonville who rents out their place, and is totally booked up, you know, off the grid, you know, rental, and, yeah, she makes quite an income renting out her place, so maybe it's, will be more of an issue in the future. And I was also elected to be second vice president of the, of our region.
Oh, good, you're on.
I didn't apply.
Starting up the ladder.
I didn't apply, they pulled me down.
Water and Wastewater Systems Committee, it was up in there. Revited?
Revited is going to meet on the, Revited is going to meet, I think, on the twenty-second, and I think the mayor may decide to change the makeup of that, potentially, or.
Yeah. Take that under advisement.
The twenty-second?
September twenty-second.
Oh, September twenty-second, that's highways of it, okay.
They're on the books, that's what's important.
Finance Committee, not met?
Susie, that, we have not, and you were working on a schedule for that?
I don't have one.
Okay, okay.
And I saw some emails relative to the Caltrans.
September first.
Okay.
September first for the Caltrans.
Oh, okay.
Center for the Arts, nothing at this point. Any other committee reports we're missing? Any council member reports or recommendations?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank whoever arranged for the ride that we had at the Fourth of July Parade with that. It was wonderful, and I really enjoyed it. The gal did such a nice job of, of driving the horses and the wagon, I just thought it was nice. And it was in a good location in the parade, and.
It was best ever.
Anyhow, I wanna thank whoever did that, did a good job, thank you.
Marcy Berry.
Yeah, no, it was first.
Thank you guys for putting up with my nieces.
No, it was.
Two were great, and the other one, which sure we were gonna flip over.
Yes.
Yes, I wanted to let people know that Caltrans is going to be having a public forum to discuss their proposed use of herbicides in the Little Lake Valley wetlands as part of the mitigation work. And that will be on August thirteenth from six to eight in the evening here in, I guess in the community center. So that will be, it's, they're doing that, I believe, primarily at the urging of the regional water board, who feel they didn't do a very thorough job of educating people about why they're proposing what they are. And perhaps considering some alternatives, which as the city council knows, we, we suggested there might be some alternatives. And on that same sort of subject, I've inquired of our staff about the city's use of herbicides in our wetlands, in our wastewater treatment plant, and also at the new Elias well for some mitigation there. And I understand that will be agendized at our August twenty-sixth meeting. And it's my understanding that, that there won't be any continued use of herbicides between now and then, so that the city council has an opport, and the public have an opportunity to, to weigh in on whether that's what we wanna do or not. So, and then I have one other announcement, unrelated to herbicides, and that is that Well is having our annual garden tour. It's this time, it's going to be a walking tour featuring west side gardens, so it'll be an easy walk, starting, this will be on August fifteenth, Saturday, August fifteenth. Starting at ten o'clock from the Brook Trails, uh, Brook, Brookside School parking lot, and ending at Brookside School Farm with lunch and some music. So if anyone's interested in more information about that, it's on the Well website, and there'll be stuff in the papers.
I was contacted by a constituent that was almost hit in the intersection here at Commercial and One-O-One. And I know that we're gonna be doing a traffic planning process down there, but since we know that the issue is that you, the westbound traffic gets the go-ahead to go green at the same time when the walking, you know, sign is going. So I'm wondering if we couldn't talk to Caltrans about altering the timing of that light slightly, so that the people who are walking get a head start. You know, they only have to get across half, but people just, I know that, I think Adrian and Jim were almost hit in that intersection once.
I was.
I mean, it's, it's just, it's just, it's a hazard that we're aware of, and we should try to, Caltrans is the one who has the light expertise, so we might as well work with them.
So we have actually brought this to their attention recently.
Okay.
And they are looking into it to look at what the options are and.
Great, inform us of that. Yeah, 'cause we don't have a left turn, right, yeah.
Okay, Good and Welfare, so move on to closed session, do we still have all three of these items on closed session?
No.
No.
We have.
We have the Reach medical on closed session.
Okay.
We don't have B.
B and C are not? Okay, so we will, we will adjourn to closed session and.